Thank you. It is December 8th, I don't think this is working, at 5:00 PM. We are here with the Finance Committee. We have Sarah Sadowski with us, Jim Richards, his last Finance Committee meeting with us. We will cry later. And the lovely Cara here with us as well. We will be going over fiscal year '27 and the very exciting bonding planning. So with that, I will-
We do have one other item too, net metering agreement, just looking for a recommendation, and I'll explain when we get to that item.
Okay, and what did you say it was?
Net metering.
Net metering, perfect.
Yeah, some of you may remember that discussion, might be close to two years ago.
All right.
But I'll explain.
All of us but Jim, lucky Jim.
So I'll first start with FY '27 and state adequacy. So in front of you is a put-together, we will clean it up and try to get grids, but this was the best way we could fit it, comparison of state adequacy that you received this year and the most recent calculation from the state that they have sent us on what we project to get next year. So if we take the top part, you see 2425 membership ADM there to the left. So you see 3565.66. If you go to the next column over, you see 3,00511. So you can see we have a difference of about 54.56 students, okay? So there's one. Base adequacy, the next line down, last year was 426564 per student. It went up to 4351 per student. So that's an increase of about $67,000, okay? Now we go to the free and reduced, 1,28746 was the ADM. This year it went down another 46, so about that, 45.6 I should say. So that results in a decrease when you see differentiated aid. It went from 2392 to 2441, but that's a decrease of 49,000 based on, even though there's a small increase, we went down number of ADM. So then we go to special ed aid, or special ed ADM. We went 761, it still held the same at 76158. I don't know why that is the same at the moment. Will they just carry that forward, or it's recalculated off of something else because it's too ironic that it's the same? But we're still, we have more questions about this. And you'll see why when we get to the bigger number. But anyway, that, the aid itself went up a little bit, so that's resulting in $33,000 increase. And you have ELL membership, again, same thing, that's kept the same. With the aid went up a little bit, so that resulted in another $3,200. And then you have the home education ADM, .45, going up to .75, so a .30 increase. And based on that aid, we're getting another 1,300 bucks. So the result for adequacy education, you can see we're going up $55,756.42, okay? Now, we move down to the equalized valuation part. So you'll see that the equalized valuation without utilities went from 6.3 billion to 7.395 billion. That has a rate now of a $1.12, went to a $1.03, so it went down, what is that, 11 cents? No, I'm sorry, 9 cents, 9 cents, right?
9 cents.
Yep, so the statewide education tax winds up going up from 7.1 million, or the amount we would be raised, to 7.6 million. So you're getting another 486,000 in local state education tax, but it's hitting the local taxpayer, okay? Now, we move on to the equalized valuation for state education with utilities. Went from 6.7 billion to 7.85 billion, resulting in an increase of 1.147 billion. I have questions into what caused that to go up so much, whether that is all part of the statewide reevaluation that's required, and the state has done it, because you'll be getting, we won't see what the evaluation is in Concord until October. So when you look at the free and reduced, next line, the free and reduced membership, which is that same 1,287 up top, to 1,241, again, same number down, up top, the decrease of 45 kids. When you take A divided by B, which is the valuation divided by that, you get the equalized valuation per free and reduced student. That's a decrease of 978,362, okay? Then we move on to D, the equalized valuation, there's a cap. And based on the difference between last year and what the cap is for this year, we would get another 137,332. Make sure that's a positive number, I believe it is. Yeah. And then we go, the amount below the cap is, let's see, according to this, 1.857117. Last year, the extraordinary needs grant was 4.7. That's resulting in a decrease of 2,851. So when you take the total adequacy and the increase for the statewide education property tax, and you net them together, we're looking at a decrease in adequacy of almost $2.8 million.
I don't understand the extraordinary grant drop.
I have, I have questions in about that. I don't quite understand myself, but this is raw numbers that we put together and-
I can give a little bit of a rough, I think the extraordinary needs grant, you know how they've been looking at the adequacy formula for years?
Mm-hmm.
It was, there's been back and forth, a disparity grant, like if you exceeded a certain percentage of free and reduced lunch students, you would get basically like an accelerator or a bonus amount of money. It was meant for high poverty districts. And so the extraordinary grant is one of those categories. And so it's just, it's just some super complicated, convoluted formula that the legislature came up with to give extra money, and then I believe they're tapering off. So we're just, our numbers are just shifting where we're getting less. The other thing I wanted to ask, if you guys understood the equalized valuation?
I was actually just gonna ask you to hear that formula again.
So, so there's a little description here that says equalized valuation is the estimated true end market value of all taxable property in a municipality. The equalized part is sort of just, add the words across the state. So they're trying to compare the value of Concord to like the value of Portsmouth, and the value of Hollis, and the value of Claremont. And so they have this formula that makes us all equal, and then they apply that statewide education property tax. And that's how they come up with that number. So Jack, as you've reached out to the Department of Revenue, right? Because they are the ones, it's not the Department of Education, it's the Department of Revenue that manages that, because this is a shocking increase in the city's valuation, which is impacting that. So that's a really good question, of how that's so much higher.
And, you know, if we talk about these extraordinary need grant, why couldn't this have been a phase? Why is it all in one shot? And if that's just the way the formulas work, and that's what the legislature has built in, that's where we're at. But you're looking at about 2.8 million less.
So, to continue that question, it sounds like it may be a certain amount that the district gets, but you said a tapering, so each year, so we don't know, will this be a drop again next year? Like if there's like a plan that we can know ahead of time?
Correct.
What the anticipated drop will be?
Correct. That's the questions we have, because this part, I mean, why did this valuation jump up 1.1, almost 1.15 billion dollars? Is again, is this the 10-year lookout, and it's all being done across the state, and this is the first hit from it? Or, I mean, I don't think we're gonna see billion dollar increases on multiple years, but that's what we need to understand. Couldn't this have been phased in, or?
Right.
Because it's a big hit for next year.
Yeah.
But as these numbers now start to come in, we wanna get you informed, because it's gonna impact the FY '27 budget. Okay. But you can have this, we will, again, try to clean it up with grids. It's just, trying to fit it on one of these was difficult, so-
It's actually pretty clean.
Yeah.
I thought it was, you know-
But we try to follow the As, we put letters into, because this isn't the way they give it to us, so, anyway.
Well, thank you.
So that's an FY '27 state adequacy. Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Jack, you mentioned these are draft numbers. Do you know when we might see final numbers from the state?
That, unless they tell us there's something changing, that's what we're gonna put in the budget. Because they have given it, they didn't say embargoed. This is what they've sent out. And based on the list, Manchester's going down as well. But we, we look like we take the biggest hit, based on the list we, that they've shared.
There's a couple surrounding communities, though, proportionally, they're taking a significant hit too, a couple of the smaller towns around us.
That's so sad.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
I mean, it would be good to get the reasoning, right?
Oh, yeah.
Like there's a formulator, and, you know, I don't know, maybe they're counting all of our state property.
I think, this is again, just really general, not, I think if you think of that extraordinary needs grant, similar to like ESER funds, like it was kind of like a one-time fund, hoping that they'd pass it again in the future. I think that's more like, if you can think of it conceptually like that.
That seems, that's what I was like.
So they're just reducing, state's just reducing the funds they're giving us, based on that?
And I think there was a whole harmless too, like, like, for not, I remember seeing like 95% on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, right.
Like you got 95% of your funding, even if it dropped. So, yeah, I mean, just when you look at the, the one year, this year, the spreadsheet is this full of calculations.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Next item would be the bond planning. So in front of you is a document that says for discussion purposes only, Hilltop Securities. So this is a roadmap of dates in which we are trying to, one, on the, on the fifth, you are just having a public hearing on the loan resolution, that is, you're not voting on any bonds or anything. What we do first is basically apply, make sure we meet all the legal requirements to be able to borrow. And it looks at our capacity, you'll see on here, S&amp;P 500, we have to give our position, our audits are, we just got our draft of our audit last week, so we have provided that to them, they understand, that that's still waiting. And there's also, as a side note, on the federal fund side, they're still waiting direction from the federal government, so they can't do the federal audit, what they call the single audit, of the funds that they pick. But our general fund audit is in draft form, and we have that at the moment. So that'll be a key piece. But this is the schedule they have laid out for us at the moment. Again, this is just for discussion purposes, we're meeting again with them later on this week. You still need to hear the various ways we plan on financing this middle school. But right now, we're just trying to get the legal requirements. You will see on here, as we move through those dates, getting those pieces, you know, last day to district to satisfy legal requirements, January 22nd. So it's, it's aggressive to try to get this all done, which we'll be ready for. But the key thing is for you to be able to see how it's gonna impact everything for you. In our discussions, the bonds will look like we will, likely do multiple bonds, not all at the same time, to try to soften this. And as I've told them, these are the same financial advisors that work with the city, by the way. We have different bond councils, but same financial advisors. But we're doing our best to try to coordinate projects and impacts, okay? And as, as another note, I did mention to the building committee, who I think Jim was there, I don't know if anybody else was there, we are now number one on the list for building aid. But as I said to the committee, we are number one at getting nothing.
Yeah.
Because they didn't fund it. So we have asked for clarification from the DOE, as it relates to the number they put on there, because they put our 164 number, took 40%, so it says 65. So you will begin getting questions, well, how come this, what, what number should we be using? Because I think in your financial planning, that if the state had funded it, you should see what that impact would have been if they funded the program that they brought back. But obviously, they didn't, there is no money. That was that meeting that me, Tim, and Matt went to with the commissioner a couple weeks ago, to ask if there's anything we can do. We would encourage people to write to their reps, see? But, just so you know, because I'm sure that question's gonna come up once it's out, that we are number one. Of the 17 that were grandfathered, 14 dropped off, for one, one reason or another, but mostly, from what they told me, it was mostly because they didn't fill out their May 1st form, which was, you know, in order to stay on the list, you had to refill it out. We did that. So we figured it's not hurting staying on the list, because if they had funded it, it'd be a pretty good, be better than zero, you know, if they had funded it. So that's just an FYI.
Yeah. And if I remember right, it was something that if it had been funded, we would have to have accepted the funds prior to shovel in the ground, right? So-
Once the shovel was in the ground, you fall off the list, under current law.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then, as we mentioned, the building committee, it's 2 million every six months you wait.
Some of the schools are deciding to forego waiting and just go on having their projects, because they cost more to wait than what they would be saving.
Yeah.
And that's what the DOE explained to us, what, a year ago or so, when we had somebody in here talking about that, and they said, many people just drop off, because it costs long, costs more waiting than it does to actually, you know, when you're eventually gonna get it, if you get it at all, if it ever comes back at all.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions about that? There'll be-
No, you have a lot of work to do, Mr. Dunn.
So do you guys. Go on.
But look, there's holidays. Look at all these holidays.
Yeah, I guess.
Is that-
Be thankful for what we have, right.
Is that your little Christmas card to us, before the end of the year?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, next I'm gonna-
My heart is with you, Jim.
Next I'll move on to net metering agreement. So I'm not, I'm gonna say this was a little over a year ago, almost two years ago. If you remember, the state, the city had approached us about, asked for me to participate in RFP for a solar farm to be put on top of the old dump off Turnpike Road. So as part of that process, they selected Kier-Sarge Energy for solar. They probably should have put one the solar, the other is the water. The city had entered into an agreement with Essex Hydro, and they get a check from them for energy that is created. They have too much of the Essex, so they, they need to shed some of that in order for Kier-Sarge to pick up solar. And we need to get some of the solar as well. So this is a joint effort between the two of us, to try to utilize as much of this as possible. So in the next quarter or two, Essex will relieve the city of their obligation under their contract, and we will pick up that portion, which should be about 2.25 million kilowatt hours. That will result in us getting a financial payment. You should see that monthly, it's a direct check, that will just, budgetary wise, we may put it out in your energy risk reserve, or you can put it towards your project. But we estimate for a year, that would equate to about $33,750 at 10 cents a kilowatt hour. If it's 12 cents, it's gonna be more money. Once Kier-Sarge with energy comes on, the solar portion, we'll expect to take 3.7 million kilowatt hours off of that, which will result, we estimate about 56,000. And I used this with our consultant, Beth Greenbath from Beacon Integrated Solutions, been with us, the city, St. Paul's, and Bo for, even before I got here. But she does a great job in helping us procure energy. She does our natural gas bids, our electric bids, and was integral in making all this work between the city and us. So you could see, that could be potentially another 90,000 a year in revenue, so, not, not bad.
That's wonderful.
So, yeah.
Good news, thank you.
Good to hear a revenue side, because the other revenue, so, again, their estimates, we'll see where that goes, but all we're asking for tonight is for you to recommend that the board authorize us to enter into an agreement to finalize all this. Just so you know, the same rebates that the city get, percentage and all that, we're getting the exact same deal. So it's not any different, okay?
All right.
I will move, that the Finance Committee recommends that the Board of Education authorize the administration to work with the city. The city and districts' energy procurement consi- The city's and district's energy procurement consultants, Essex Hydro, and Kier Sarge Energy to finalize a net metering agreement that mutually benefits both the district and the city.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Sir, does anybody wanna discuss it?
Oh, I don't want to discuss it.
I don't.
Thank you.
I, I think it's, I think it's great that we're getting ninety thousand.
Yeah.
It's a rarity.
Kudos.
Resident things, right?
Nope, that's it.
I'm curious, is the mutual benefit, like, like, is there a breakdown of that, what the city benefits or not, if we break their contract?
So if I have my, I don't wanna speak out of term, but I think the way it's structured, so their biggest utilizer of energy is the water treatment plant. And I think the way this is structured is the city, of all of this, they'll get a fifty-nine percent of what's available, and we have forty-one percent of what's available. I think I have that number right. So it's, however, the distribution has to be to bring them down to make it equal, but they utilize more than we do. Our two biggest, the biggest building is the high school. That's what's called a G-one account. Runlet is G-one. The other ones are G, what they call G-two. But, um, we don't use as much as, as they do. So it's proportional is the way we, we see it. And that's the best thing that came up. And that's what I've said to the city folks. Whatever mutually benefits us as a city in total, you know, and brings things down, be properly proportioned. So, okay?
Let me try that again. All opposed, or any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any sustain? No? Which is passes?
And that's all I have with five minutes left.
Great job, Zach. Anything else anybody like to bring forward to discuss?
Eric, was there something brought to us in non-public that we were supposed to bring? Am I, am I missing?
Any financial?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's for the full board, if it's anything with their regional agreements, maybe?
Yeah, is, is that happening tonight? Are we having? That's the six o'clock hour. Okay, sorry. I was trying to figure out the timing of everything. Gotcha. Then no, no more business.
All right. Take a motion.
So moved.
All right.
Okay.
Um, any opposed? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It will always move meeting to a close.
Ready?
Nice. Nice job, Jerry.
The meeting of the City and Community Relations Committee of the Concord, Concord School Board on December eighth. Um, our main topic of conversation this evening is finalizing a motion to bring to the full board for funding of the first phase of the Memorial Field project. While the board has been supportive of the fifty-fifty split, um, the details around how payment would be administered held up the vote, which makes good sense because it's pretty, it's always good to plan how you're gonna pay for something before you decide to pay for it. So Jack, our ever-present master of everything, um, spoke with city officials and, well, Dave Gill specifically, but, and, um, has put together a motion for us, but I would love it if he would just explain.
Yeah, a couple of things.
Yeah, yeah.
I think one is what you have in front of you is Memorial Field complex permits issued in twenty-twenty-five. So, uh, recreation and parks director David Gill sent this this morning. He said city council had requested, um, what the utilization of it was. Um, and he had prepared this, posted it on the website, and he thought he should give this to you. This shows that the district uses, um, twelve hundred and forty-three and a half hours, or fifty-three percent of the total permitted hours. So it's close to a fifty percent of the time, okay? So we just thought you should have this as you go into deciding what you wanna do. The other thing, I spoke with Deputy City Manager for Finance, Brian LeBrun, and, um, we had talked about being able to finance our portion of it. But the LWCF complexities are ver- uh, pretty deep. And, um, what was mentioned to council, my understanding, I think it was this past Monday or the Monday before, what he and I had talked about is would be proposed that the city bond for it, and then we would pay a portion of the payment. And in this proposal, you'll see fifty percent. So this is very similar to what we do for the fuel farm up at the, uh, comp. But that's not a fifty-fifty split. That is, I think it's twenty-five or thirty-five percent, because they utilize it a lot more than we do.
So budget implications, because that was a concern?
Budget implications. So what this would be is about a twenty-year bond on the one point two million, assuming three and a half percent. Again, this is estimates. Our portion would be fifty-one thousand in year one. And so this, that amount, assuming as we get closer and they go to bond, because they're talking about neck, affecting it for twenty-twenty-seven. So it won't affect this year's budget. Be next, it'd be next year, which we're planning. About fifty-one thousand would be first year, and then you can see it goes down from there.
And this, uh, this plan will ensure that the time, a timeline can begin, so the project can commence.
At least if, assuming the full board approves this, if you've at least funded it to the city.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Yeah.
Like, if we approve this, it's, um, it.
Now, it's now on the city to get their side done and finalize that. And whether you wanna go beyond just this piece of it and deciding, and the whole fifty-fifty, we'll have to leave that to the governing bodies to decide that.
Um, I like the fact that Dave did a deep dive on the usage. I know that a lot of our wards, one and some two people, get picky about Memorial Field because they feel that they don't use it. But, um, I do know that, you know, under the guise of Parks and Recreation, Rolfe Park, which is very much a Pennacook Park, falls under our financial, you know, burden as much as any of the other parks. So this fifty-fifty usage, in my mind, indicates that a lot of the usage isn't school district, which I can understand. It also supports our responsibility to paying half, I believe, because if we're using fifty percent of a, of a field, of a, of a space, then we should financially support our use. I would love to hear feedback on what you all think about the payment, the bonding and the payment before I.
I actually have a question on the usage, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Is the idea that just, um, once we update Memorial Field, there'd be more, um, available time for usage? So extend the year that's able to use. Like, I know right now, we can't use it long, because it's a field, whatever. Some wondering if.
Well, yeah, once.
That usage, then that fifty percent may actually be less, because other sports organizations can use it differently.
Well, so when the, when the field isn't able to be used, for example, the month of April, the only people really using it in the month of April would be Concord High School students. Um, so it would, it would definitely make April, we would, we wouldn't have to have our practices on fields in, sometimes we go to White's Park, or we go to other community, um, places in lieu of it. So I think it would, it would increase usage for everybody. My hunch is that both sides would increase equally, is what I think. Um, because then you think of youth sports leagues, youth, youth lacrosse.
Lacrosse.
Those plays, yeah.
Their sports that could be started in more, more income.
Yeah, exactly. But that's a good point. But no, I don't think it would change the ratio.
Okay.
It would, can I just say, it would, one of the things, though, this would increase, like, tournament or outside usage that is not being realized right now by the city or us, or in that case, but the city's not holding tournaments or, you know, special events that hopefully with a turf field and some of the improvements that we would have there, we would be able to do. So, we would hope for that.
A, a good example of a sp- a sports team having the chance to raise money, the wrestling and cheer both host, host tournaments at Concord High School in the winter. All-day, weekend-long tournaments that generate massive income for their booster clubs. They sponsor them, they pay the rental fees, they do all that. But they make, you know, so I, I look at our soccer program, I look at our lacrosse program, and, uh, you know, Concord High School lacrosse jamboree, you know, in early May or something, and the money that that could generate for the, for the booster clubs and that sort of thing. So those.
Invitationals, too.
Yeah, track and field invitation. Yeah, we used to, yeah. We had a really big invitational in Concord for years that we haven't had for a while, but because of the track. But those could be city things as well, you know? It wouldn't just be school district tournaments that would. So that was sort of that. So.
So I look for you, just so you know, I look at it in two different things. You have this one point two million is your planning and permitting. So this is getting feedback and finalizing the design.
Yes, yes.
The next big task that you gotta decide is whether this is fifty-fifty all the way through.
Right. Or do we designate certain areas that are more school board oriented versus city oriented?
Yep. This is just to help get things going, or do you wanna wait till you have a plan for the whole thing? But that's, what we're proposing to unite is it gets started.
It's just that this, because I think there are still, I, I feel like I'm not inaccurate in saying we still have questions that need to be answered, that this first phase will answer for us, which could dictate what goes where. You know, we, we, we think the design is solid, but it doesn't mean at the end of the, this first phase, that the people doing all the, you know, looking at the property are gonna say, yes, this makes sense. They might say this is, you know. And I also feel, um, there's a lot of public input. I've gotten a lot of, well, I've gotten a lot of supportive emails from folks in the community. I've also gotten a lot of please stop all projects, which is, you know, a lot of people have sent, that, that goes to everything. Middle schools and golf tournaments and, and police stations and everything else. So, um, but, um, I, I, I feel very safe in saying that this also buys us another year while we're waiting to see what, what the word is on the property and the, the integrity of the land and what makes the most sense, um, to, to shift thought process and, and, you know, you know, maybe it will make sense to go in a different direction. But right now, we can't, we can't do anything until this first. So really, we're not, we're not approving thirty million dollars and solidifying this design. We're just approving the first step and getting expert opinions on what would make the most sense for that property.
Can I ask a question? Jack, so the city would take out this bond, and then we would make payments. Is there any issues whatsoever of us making payments to the city? It would be just like the fuel farm, right? We just make that payment as a budgetary item, and we just transfer the funds to the city.
And they invoice us and we pay them. We would just set up an MOU that memorializes this, whatever the numbers come out.
Yep. Straightforward.
Yep. Over those payments are, like I said, there's an estimate. Once they finally go to bond, they'll send over and say, okay, you're fifty percent. We got a three and a quarter percent. You know, this conservative at three and a half of having spoken with bond counsel, which is fine, just for budgetary purposes. But yeah, that's what it would be, and we would have the payment schedule and no, but they, they send us over and invoice.
And then the question, one other question that will have to be answered, maybe not in this phase, but in one, is if the school district gets grants, or if the city gets grants, that applies equally? Or does it apply just to the city's portion, or just our? I mean, that's something to be decided, and as, you know, the chair indicated, there's a lot of questions that will need to be answered during this, during this phase.
And then upon completion, if there's, if we hold a massive tournament that generates a ton of income, is that our profit, or does, you know, we have to, and that, there'll be a lot of work in setting all, all the ins and outs of this up. But, um, yeah, it'll be interesting. It'll, but I, you know, I sort of feel it's also consistent with how life has been in Concord with Memorial Field for a long time. There's, there's always been give and take between the city and the school district, and, um, and I feel, for the most part, it's been pretty equitable and in the best interest of kids, which is the key here. So. Um, and then the other question, should we vote to bring this to the full board for a vote? Do we, we do that tonight, or would we wait until, would people wanna wait until January? I think, my feeling is the sooner the better, but I, I guess, I don't know if that would weigh in on our vote necessarily. We have almost the, probably the whole board coming tonight, anyway. Don't we have everyone, pretty much?
Yeah, it's a regular full board meeting.
Right.
It was posted on the agenda that it was possibly coming up, right?
Yeah.
So the board can decide.
Okay, yeah.
I'm having to, yeah. I move that the city and community relations committee recommend that the Board of Education authorize an agreement to fund fifty percent of the planning and permitting phase cost for Memorial Field, totaling six hundred thousand dollars plus interest of the estimated one point two million project cost, to be paid through a structured payment plan. Would anybody like to second me?
I'll second. Right, so any more discussion?
I'm not on the committee.
No, I know, but you can also discuss. No, I know, but you can also discuss.
I want to recap, like, what we would come, I mean, I think Jack's right that, like, the 3.5, if 3.5 is a conservative estimate, like, do we put that in the, I don't know if I'm comfortable, like, just saying plus interest, like, versus plus, this is what, you know, I wouldn't want to see us go to 4%, for example.
That's fair.
Well, the other question would be, do we want to say that we're going to split it 50-50 for this phase, or do we say in our, when it comes to the board, do you want to make a 50-50 down the hall away?
I think this is just for now. I'm not comfortable as the chair of the committee, and having been on this committee with you for all these months, committing to something that has too many unanswered questions beyond this phase. I just think.
The question, the question would be if we do this 50-50 and then after this is done, the city says, nah, we want it 80-20, you guys, and then we'd have, we don't want to get in that position. So, but whatever, but I, I see your point and I, and I just asked that question, but I'm not voting, so it's not.
No, but I, does this seem vague in that regard to you guys? I don't feel like I'm committing 50-50 to the.
Well, yes, about the question of, like, how the, I don't, I wouldn't think that there's any specification around breakdown.
Because we're 50-50 for this much money, that's it.
It says planning and permitting phase.
Yeah, that's it.
That's what this phase is.
So that, yeah, so that, yeah. Jack, being the financial wizard that you are, how would we, can we put some, I mean, we have so little control over interest, how would we mitigate that?
So, well, obviously, once council says they have, and they're going to want as little as possible, once they go and they approve it, I will just get the timing of which that happens. If that bond happens later than your budget cycle, we can always adjust in October. So say there are 3%, and I can give you what those ranges would be. 3%, it's going to be there, three and a quarter.
But in terms of Sarah's concern about having it more specific in the motion, is that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
If we have an upper threshold of the expenditure, presumably we'd have a, but I don't typically cap.
Yeah, I've never, I've never seen interest capped because we don't control it.
Right.
I'm going to assume that the city has in place a, like, way they do, they have to go through a process of bonding, make sure they get the best deal, work in the best interest of the tax.
Because they're bonding the amount and then we're paying them.
Yeah.
So they wouldn't want, what one would think. Yeah, yeah.
I hope.
So, are we ready to vote?
I mean, it's really rocky timing. It is really rocky timing. But, I mean, we can't get any more information until we vote to.
Right. Yeah, which is lousy. I mean.
If anything comes in, you know, really out of the field, we can reassess.
Absolutely. And I also feel that this particular phase will give us answers, that will give us leverage to reassess.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm counting on. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, I think that's it. The only thing I would like to suggest for next year is I was at the Christmas parade with my CDA and Pathfinder's clan, and the city, the mayor and the city councilors walked, you know, elected city officials, and there was only a couple, but I feel like the school board should walk, like, we're elected officials. So I'll remind everybody next year, if I'm still on this committee, to, we should walk in the parade, wear Santa hats, throw candy.
Yes.
So.
We are not invited to the Memorial Day parade either.
I was going to say, we might have to be invited.
I know that, I'm, I'm all in, I'll get us in.
I'll get us invited.
I think it's a worthy thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I, I look forward to seeing you.
I don't, I don't remember who hosted. Is it the Kiwanis, is it?
Isn't it the Grange, or is that the Christmas tree?
That might be the.
It was Dick Patton.
It was Dick Patton forever, and now it's not, so yeah.
I don't know.
Rest in peace, Dick. Yeah, so, um, but yeah, there's, yeah, there's a lot of community groups in it, so way too many big not loud trucks and fire trucks, though we need more people. So, anything else? Does anyone have anything else?
Drive a school bus and decorate it like a flag.
I love that.
Big antlers on the front.
Hiring, we're hiring, so I love this.
Oh, my gosh. Drawing applications into the building.
Taking the electric bus?
Yeah. Ooh.
That, we need to end now, you have to end.
Yes, yes, we have to stop and, okay.
Can't talk the rest of the night.
I move we adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. So ends the meeting.
Good meeting.
Good evening. I'm going to call, to order this special meeting of the board. Ms. Meeker, will you call the roll?
Yep, Ms. Boucher is absent. Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Hastings is absent. Ms. Higgins?
Here.
Mr. Richards?
Here.
Ms. Robinson is absent. Ms. Sadowski?
Here.
Ms. Walsh?
Here.
And I am here, we have a board.
So the first item on our agenda is approving a regional career and technical education agreement that will be offered to our sending schools. With a reminder, there's an open house for sending school, school board members on Friday at the CRTC. Mr. Herbert, do you want to present the agreement?
So essentially, last board meeting, I did share a copy of the agreements with you. It is very standard, not a whole lot has changed. What has changed since the 20-year agreements we used to have in place has been two things. One, a law that, an RSA that requires us every four years to update our regional agreements. And two, now there is a component where we have to account for a CTE student coming from a sending district that would take on potentially a general education class offered at Concord High School, would be part of that. And that, that stipulation within our agreement just states that we, we would charge a rate in, you know, aligned with the RSA around CTE agreements, and the open enrollment essentially is what it is. Those are the major changes. The rest of it still discussed transportation requirements of the sending district, the facilities are, are owned, maintained by the receiving district and such. So the programs and stuff, it talks about the responsibility of the Concord School District being. being us being the Regional Technical Center, and the appropriation of the funds and stuff as far as perking grants, how we're using it and whatnot for the, for the, supporting the programs and the CTE development. But the major change would be that it's number 44, I believe, second to the last page, around CTE, non-CTE classes.
And does the sending district have any say in whether there are students? And do we have any say?
It's based, students could look at our program of studies, select a course that they are unable to take at their school, and if we have the seat, we would be able to receive them. Does the sending district have any say in that? As the RSA is written, it is open enrollment for CTE, so it is, the student could make that decision to come to Concord High School to take that additional course. Or potentially, over time, and this, you know, something that has not happened, but a child could decide to take a full, full schedule of courses at Concord High School based on the way the CTE open enrollment's written.
Questions?
Are there?
Go ahead.
Do we have students now that?
We do. We, because of our regional scope of influence, so to speak, like how far out we stretch, up to Kearsage, going out Pittsfield Middle High. The drive to Concord Regional Technical Center takes a good portion of instructional time out of the student's day. So, we have, for years, been willing to make accommodations so a child who may come in the morning for the CTE class will stay during the second period, take a course that they're unable to take at their sending district, their home school. And we've come up with a fee for them to, you know, pay for the seat at Concord High School. So, this is something we've done informally on an as-needed basis. Typically, year-two seniors struggling to get that schedule, get all the requirements in towards the end, and a couple of the further districts away where students have lost a lot of their travel time and flexibility in their schedule to take the required courses. But it's not, it's not extremely common. It's, you know, maybe one or two students a year this comes up.
Ms. Campbell? Are there any changes?
No, that's okay, go ahead first.
Are there any changes in financial arrangements or agreements in this?
As of right now, no. As of right now, no. But there is potential over time when the state is looking at the percentage of which we could charge the sending district, and if they cap that, that would change.
So, you had, thank you for the answer with regards to the fact that, would the sending district have anything? If someone were to want to take a class here that is of very limited accessibility, would they have a preference over Concord students, or no? Or would we be required to admit them, or would it be, would we say, no, we have nowhere?
One, it's seat, it's based on the seat availability, so it would, one would have to presume that we've already fulfilled the Concord requirements, and there is still room in the class, a Concord student request. Two, I don't see, again, it's not as a competitive thing, but we reserve the right to say no. So, as it is right now, we want to make sure we're meeting the Concord High School students' needs. And I, and I think we do have, you know, we do a good job at that.
Okay, good. No, I wouldn't want to say no if we didn't have to, but thank you for that answer.
Other questions?
If, if a student was going to come full-time, would that be, with school choice, would that be one of our slots, if we were to set a number of slots, or would the CRTC piece make it different? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I understand what you're asking. In this, I just highlighted it could happen, it's never happened.
Never happened before.
But could happen, and what we, it would, if we were looking at totality of open enrollment, number of seats we set aside for it, I would envision that being, because it's a, it's a student at Concord High School, essentially an open enrollment, that would be one of our open enrollment seats if we were in an open enrollment school. Right now, when we talk open enrollment, we are, for all intents and purposes, open enrollment because of this Concord Regional Technical Center and the open enrollment piece connected to CTE.
Right, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion? Was there a draft motion? I thought, I saw one.
I did not, sorry, but I could.
I thought I had seen one. I will move that, it's about authorizing me to sign these regional agreements, right? So.
So, I will move that the, I will move that the board, I will move that we, the board, approve the president to be able to sign the agreements as they were presented in our last meeting.
Discussion?
Did, was there a second?
Yes, Ms. Campbell second, sorry. Very quietly. Move by Mr. Richards second, by Ms. Campbell. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we met, before this meeting, the community and city relations, city and community relations met and got some updates on financing for the design stage of Memorial Field. Would someone like to report out on that?
Yeah, so, well, actually, Jack, I'll let you again share the details of your conversations and what exactly the payout looks like.
Yep, sure. So, in that meeting, we handed out a document that's been posted on the city's website as it relates to Memorial Field use. I think you all should have a copy of it. It says Memorial Field Complex permits issued in 2025. In here, it has various permits, but it indicates that the Concord School District was permitted for 1,243 and a half hours of use, or 53.7% of the total permit hours issued. So, the proposal is for Concord School District to pick up 50% of the planning and permitting as part of the Memorial Field project. That's the only thing that this motion, that, basically, design, planning, and permitting portion of it, which is estimated to be 1.2 million, we would split that. At that meeting, we showed this estimated cost that we would look to budget for 2027. So, when you look at the 1.2 million, principal of about 60,000, and then assuming a 3.5% interest rate, the first-year payment would be 102,000, or the Concord School District would pick up half of that, 51,000. And this would be a 20-year bond for this phase.
And the city would carry the bond, and we would reimburse them, similar to we?
Correct. We did look at other options where we would borrow our portion. But with the, the way that's structured, it would be too complicated. And I don't think it makes sense for you to take out of your trust fund to give 600,000 upfront, not considering what we're about to go into and what we've dealt with the last year, so. But that's what 50% would be for your budget next year. If you approve this tonight as a board, your portion, I think, unless council has something else, it would be in council's hands now to decide whether they want to move forward. It's their property.
I think they do, but I mean, they can't make the decision until.
Yep, I know you have your, I think you're in as a donation in their capital improvement plan, so. But that's how we've, me and the deputy city manager talked and agreed that this is probably the best way to go at this point in time to do it, since they own the property.
The budget impact is minimal because it's such a small amount year-to-year. It can become a line item, it's just invoice we get and pay, which can, in some respects, ease the minds of taxpayers.
And this is very similar to what we did with the fuel farm. If you remember, at the Comf, we spent about 40-some thousand, and that continues to go down to upgrade that, and we jointly benefit from that, so we don't pay road tax. If we were to go and get fuel at, like, Irving or whatever, the road tax is built into that fuel. We don't have to worry about that here. We jointly cooperatively buy that fuel, so.
To be clear again, just to reiterate to people who might be listening, this, this agreement is just for this payment. It's for this 1.2 million, it's not for the continuation of the project. As each phase ends, it becomes a new conversation with new plans and new ideas and that sort of thing. So, we're not tying ourselves into, you know, a $30 million commitment. It's just the 600,000 for this phase of development. So, we can vote on it tonight, or if it's the board's wish to wait until January. I'm not sure if that is necessary, but I'll defer.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll pull that one back up.
Tabled motion, so the motion would be to take off the table the previous motion, December 1st.
I actually think we.
Would we need a new motion?
I think, based on what city and community relations do, we need.
It's fine.
A new motion.
Yeah, it would be the motion.
Yep, yep.
So, yeah, Jack.
Yeah, I will.
I have it on my phone.
That helps you.
So, I would move that the city and community relations committee, the city and community relations has recommended the Board of Education authorize an agreement to fund 50% of the planning and permitting phase for Memorial Field, totaling $600,000 of the estimated 1.2 million project cost to be paid through a structured payment plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Higgins, second by Ms. Campbell. Discussion. I'm comfortable moving forward with this. I think this, the information that the city released certainly shows that council's concerns that, you know, we were getting too good a deal, might not be warranted. You know, because this is only talking about permit hours, it's not talking about people who are out cross-country skiing now, or using the tennis courts. It also doesn't reflect, you know, the extensive use of our buildings and fields that we don't charge the city for. I do think going forward, if we move forward into the next phase, we need to look at broadening the committee. Mr. Richards and Ms. Higgins have done great work, but I think we need to bring in our athletic directors.
Oh, absolutely.
And some members of the public for the next stage.
Those folks came to some of the meetings, so.
No, I agree. I think I support that very much. I think Barb would as well, from, you know.
Much bigger decisions with much bigger impact.
And start updating our MOU and answering questions about where increased revenues would go and how they'd be applied, and how grants would be applied to shares and things like that.
And also, it would be good to really get a handle on how much we have our buildings used for city things, like, we have this nice thing that says Memorial Field, how about what we do for them?
And I have actually asked the superintendent to get that information for the board, so hopefully we will have it soon.
People see what they see, so I think if they, yeah.
Further discussion? Ms. Meeker?
I would just like to acknowledge, I'm sure everybody's been getting similar emails in the last few weeks around some of our constituents' requests that we pause all major projects moving forward. I completely understand the economic anxiety that we are all feeling. This is also a particular project that I have heard from many constituents that we absolutely have to do it, that this is one of these must-haves. It's gone too long, it's no longer a safe place to be, and we use it in a significant way. It's part of our school ecosystem. So, I do want to acknowledge that there is continued pressure on us to be as fiscally responsible as we can, but I do think that moving on this now is a fiscally responsible decision because the situation is never going to correct itself, and it's, it's time to move forward.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion passes. And our final item is, the Monitor did a story on what we'll be doing at our January meeting that I think was not really accurate, so. About the discussion.
Yeah, the resolution. You're not going to be voting on any bonds on January 5th. This is just a part of the legal requirement. If you remember, we introduced a loan resolution at your December 1st meeting. All we will do is have a public hearing on that loan resolution. At the Finance Committee, we laid out a, for purposes only, a schedule that we're working with our financial advisor that's both worked with the city and with us to finalize that timeline, because you'll have to meet the legal requirements first, and then the schedule talks being done with the legal requirements around the end of January. But that's all that is, the hearing on the resolution, not, you're not borrowing, you're not, we're not going to the bank the next day and get 168 million dollars.
And we're not looking at, at bond options.
No.
That will come after we authorize.
Yeah, once the debt is authorized, so to give you an example, when they authorized the middle, the high school in the 90s, they authorized about 33 million in debt. When I came to this job in 2012, there was actually an outstanding authorization that was still sitting. Couldn't do anything. If I tried to borrow against it, it's a 20-year-old project, it had to be canceled. When we did the elementary, we did 62.5 million dollar authorization, we bonded 55 million. The board voted and canceled the other 7.5 million, didn't use that authorization, because you have a timeframe in which you can use it. This is the same thing. You're opening up that construction line, and then what we borrow has to fit within that authorization. And that's the, that's what you pass for a project on October 22nd, 2nd or 23rd.
But you'll come back to the board with, like, schedules of one week, by start bond payments, and how we might structure it.
Correct.
Thank you.
And it'll be likely, in the initial, it's going to be multiple bonds. I don't believe we're going to borrow it all upfront, even though I'm looking at interest that we could earn on that, and, you know, you have spend down, you have arbitrage rules, there's a variety of different things that have to happen. But it'll likely be successive bonds, and I am working, based on what we're looking at at 27, an option for you to delay that until 28.
I apologize if it's already on our website, and I just did not see it. I'm wondering, this is going to get very confusing for the, for our community. And even for the board itself. I'm wondering if this was done for maybe the elementary schools, or if there's something we can do to put a, like, what's ahead timeline, and just kind of simplify as much as possible to kind of offset, or be a little proactive in offsetting any miscommunication or fake news that may come out, and your face is telling me that there is something coming.
Oh, no, no. So, what I'm, what I'm looking at is, we just met this morning, talked about the next nine months, which is.
You probably already thought of it.
Draft scratched here.
Oh, beautiful.
Of looking at finance, the construction piece, key things, what are action items that you need to take, yes.
Okay.
That's our goal, is to show you what that looks like for the whole project, but really what the next nine months, which gets a shovel in the ground and money being spent, yes.
I don't know how you'll feel about this, Teri. This is just a bubble thought I had a while back ago. If it's even possible, there are a lot of great quick tutorials from, like, GFOA, or even School Board Association on the financing of public entities. So, like, if I think, just thinking about, like, this timeline, okay, we're meeting on this day just to discuss a bond and a link, what is a bond? And it takes a right to that video. I know this is getting kind of in the weeds, but I'm happy to pull some of those, and that's something that we could do. It would be great, just a link we could send to the public, or like, hi, this is what that means.
I think that would be great.
And we, we literally talked today, because as I gently remind some of my colleagues, not everybody's built a school before, you know?
Oh, really?
You know, right, and so, you know, some things that, I mean, you want to get mad excited, just say HVAC, you know?
We just bring a little device that makes it smell like diesel fuel in my office, it gets them excited.
Oh, my God. Can this be a video we linked to?
We just don't want to assume, and it's, it's such a big, I mean, in a good way. It's such a major project. We do want to make sure that people feel like they understand what's happening, so. Yes, but any suggestions, if you have a little video, short, better?
That's, yeah, less than two minutes.
We can include it, and.
I'll see what's out there.
As far as messaging on the middle school project, it's probably going to go out a few days after a building committee meeting. So, we'll do kind of like a monthly summary, send it out, unless there's some major milestone or something different, so that'll be a normal.
Well, I think probably pre-January meeting, so people understand, like, what are we voting on? What does this mean? This isn't the final thing, yeah, finance, yeah. That would be probably a good pre, a Christmas time message.
Thank you.
Anything else?
And then, at the Finance Committee, there was one other thing we had asked for the committee to discuss, consider, and they did, and a regular recommendation. I don't know if you remember, about a year or two ago, I mentioned, for those that weren't at the Finance Committee, I mentioned that we, they had asked the district to participate in their RFP for solar panels, for adding a solar farm. And that solar farm is to be built on Old Tom Pike Road, the dump. Kearsage Energy was selected. When they selected them, and they're in the process of constructing that, my understanding is sometime in the, sometime this summer, that's going to be online. And there was a net metering agreement that was in place with the city. And there was a net metering agreement that was in place with the city, with Essex Hydro. And with what they're consuming up, with what the city is consuming, when Kearsarge comes online, they have to free up some capacity in their agreement from Essex Hydro in order to take on some stuff from Kearsarge. So, I had mentioned, this was a while ago, and I quickly tried to go back and find the minutes, it just wasn't that quick for me, and they got away. But what we had mentioned was, we would work with the city cooperatively to figure out how we each take portions of this, so that they get revenue and we get revenue out of this. And that is what the agreement that we have in place. So, sometime in the next two quarters, it's a draft document, we're going back and forth, but the way, the agreement, we would take 2.2 million kilowatt-hours out of them, and that would result in us getting about $33,000 a year, okay? That's a direct check payment, and we'll propose to you where do you think that go? So, that's for Essex Hydro, and that comes with the city. So, the same agreement the city has, we're getting the same exact agreement. So, it isn't like they're getting, we're getting less of an agreement, it's just, we're taking what their utilization and what they were receiving money off of, that part's coming to us, so that they can pick up Kearsarge piece, and then there's more remaining, so we're going to get 3.7 kilowatt in net metering, which will result in about 56,000 a year when that comes online. Again, these are estimates based on 10 cents a kilowatt hour for a net metering financial payment.
And we're buying that energy from them, or no?
No.
No, so we're not committed to buying?
No.
We're just getting, okay.
Yep, we're just getting, we're just an off-take. Our, our contract for electric was with BP, that changed December 1st, so.
Way out of my purview, huh?
But, yeah, it's one of the few things I come to you and say, hey, we're going to get additional revenue. So, what we're asking for you to do is approve us entering into an agreement to do this. And again, this was us working jointly with the city and our mutual energy procurement person, which is Beth Greenblatt from Beacon Integrated Solutions. She consults for us, the city, Bo, and St. Paul's. So, that's been a longstanding relationship. She helps us with our natural gas and electric procurement, which we just re-upped. We went down about 3 cents a kilowatt for electric, went up a smidge on natural gas, which, which went down, but anyway. But she's helped consult and work on this agreement, and I've had this to Dean to make sure on the energy side, anything there. So, we're just in the process of finalizing that. But it's literally transferring, again, that, from us to the city, and then Kearsarge, hopefully that'll be up and running this summer. So, the finance committee recommended to the board, and then this is the proposed motion that we have for you, for us to enter into those agreements, and when we budget this year for 27, see a little revenue line. What's this new line?
We'll take, we'll take any little revenue item we can get.
I will move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to work with the city, the city's and district's energy procurement consultant, Essex Hydro and Kearsarge Energy, to finalize a net metering agreement that mutually benefits both the district and the city.
Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Sadowski. This has been going on for several years, I believe. Our new, one of our incoming board members, I believe, works for Essex Hydro, so I think we just want to make sure that we keep everything separate going forward.
And it's good to get this done before all that happens, so, but yeah, this has been a multi-year event.
Questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other business? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. Richards.
My last full board meeting.
Oh, I don't know, I feel like because...
I know, you keep adding one on there, I know. Noticed that.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
By Ms., moved by Mr. Richards, seconded by Ms. Sadowski. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
The meeting is over at 6:20.